Good evening. I'm Jim Fox. I will open the March 31st meeting of the planning board. First on the issue is any outstanding minutes, the minutes for March 17th. Are we ready to... Sorry, the other members are reading. Are there any meeting minutes for approval?
The minutes of March 17th were corrected and recommended for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next on the agenda is approval not required plans. Applicant St. Anthony's Shrine Order of Friars, Minor Providence of the Holy Name, to divide three lots into two located on Uncatina North and Nashawn North on a plan by Holmes McGrath filed March 20, 2015. Is there someone here for the applicant? Anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board, good evening. I'm Bob Amet, attorney for the order. And the plan that's before you shows two lots where there were three lots. This re-division of the property was approved recently by the planning board pursuant to a special permit. All of the lots are on existing improved roads, so the plan does not show a subdivision.
Any comments by any members of the boards? Board, any comment on the plan? This is something we've reviewed already.
Yeah, yeah.
When this is just half... They need a plan to go with the special permit to record it and everything, so this is...
No, I would have looked at the site. I think it's fine. I think it makes a lot of sense, so I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve this plan as endorsed by the...
We endorse, yeah.
We endorse this. As submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All set. Thank you. Next is a discussion regarding the site plan review. The applicant is McDougals Cape Cod Marine Services, Inc., to install four three-tier racks for increased year-round boat capacity at a property located at 145 Falmouth Heights Road, Falmouth, Mass. Let's see. For the applicant, you have...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Klauer. I'm an attorney with Amet Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant this evening. Joined tonight by Tom Delato, Special Project Manager from McDougals, Raul Lazardi Rivera from Holmes McGrath, and Bob Amet from our office. At our last hearing, we were waiting on the referral from the fire department, which has been issued, and they approved of the project. We met with the inspectional services on-site, walked them through what we had proposed. They were pleased with what we had done and were happy to endorse it. I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have in addition to that.
The only question I had was the fire department, and you had the same one.
Exactly.
And that's been addressed. Yes, Paul?
I wasn't very familiar with the site, like some of the other members of the board, but I went through the site the other day. I tried to find... He was not there at the time, so I spoke to someone. I drove through the site. My only concern is that the racks number four at the entranceway, I think is really tight. You have gas cylinders there, you have an access there, you have a fire connection, and I have a real concern with that.
Well...
And I think if you look at the boat racks, one, there's space to the east of that would make a lot more sense in my mind. I can't tell you what to do. But basically, I went through that area, and that's really tight. That's one of the two egresses from that property. And the property is pretty tight, no matter how you look at it. There's a lot going on there, and they're making maximum use of it. But I question the location of the racks at that particular location, given the other things that are there, the gas tanks, the access to the building, and the fire connection.
The... You have to remember, the racks are slanted, so there is more access than would appear to increase the width of the way. I believe the width is 60 feet across, which is ample space for any egress. And the applicant feels that's the most efficient space in terms of where the well is for loading and unloading of the boats to minimize the amount of travel time and travel distance, because when you have a boat on a forklift, I don't think you want to go very far.
Observation, that's all. Thank you.
Totally noted. Thank you.
Yes? My comment is that this zoning is doing what its intent is to do, which is to support the marine industry. This is a legitimate use for that property. I just think the parking is adequate. The town planners told us on a number of occasions that you don't build parking for Easter Sunday. Being a boat owner in a smaller marina, very seldom do we ever have a full parking lot. So I find the parking is adequate for the additional boats. I also look at it in terms of the economy itself. You have that number of boats coming in. That's... I know personally that it's probably $3,000 to $5,000 in additional revenue that's going to be spent here. So I think it's a good thing. It's doing what the bylaw or the zoning change was meant to do, is to preserve the marine district.
Just keep in mind, we're a site plan review.
Right.
Okay, we're talking a little bit about use here.
Right.
Which is understandable, but where we're here for a site plan review. I just want to keep that focused.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment to Mr. Dryer's concern. The space closest to the exitway here, the bottom rack, that will actually be left vacant. We arranged that with the fire department, so there will be no boat parked on the lowest level there, and that would be the one that would, to any extent, may impede. So that's one more thing that will be addressed in order to free up that space.
Yes, Doug?
So if that's the case, then why not just have the rack be a little smaller?
Two levels or length-wise?
Oh, it's just the first level that will be vacant?
It's just the first spot on the first level.
The lower level.
Because that's where the fire access is.
I see.
But they have to climb over the rack to get to the fire connection.
So... I got another question, if I could.
Go ahead. Yes, Doug?
So I know you said that that's the best place that the owner has chosen, but is it really the only place that would be feasible?
Well, as we talked about at the last hearing, in this space in between here, that's where the bays for these... The bays for these buildings are.
Right.
So we really can't use that space. And this space is all bulkhead area, which doesn't have a... Does not have the structural support in order to support. So that leaves this space as the most efficient and functional for access to the well, which is relocated here. So looking at it from that perspective, it really is the best location for it.
Ken, did you have something?
There is here.
Go ahead.
Has there been any information about whether or not we can disable that backup piece? I noticed a lot of the written comment.
That's an OSHA regulation, so there's nothing we can...
Can't change that.
However, we have done some test runs, and we don't feel it will be as intrusive as some people may believe.
I'm sorry, what?
We don't feel it will be nearly as intrusive as some people believe.
Okay, because of the infrequent times of loading?
Well, certainly the... A test run was done today, and I don't want to get too much into use, because this is really the structural...
Yeah.
...review. But a test run was done today. The length of time the backup would be running is sufficiently shorter than... Is significantly shorter, rather, than was originally thought. It would be about a minute and a half per launch or pickup. But again, I don't want to delve too much into usage versus site plan.
Sure.
Okay. That's it for me. So we have received several letters, and people are concerned about the use. They talk about noise. And everyone had a chance to read those?
As you mentioned, many of those are use.
Right.
And this is not a use.
Right. We're in a site plan review. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Do we want to move to...
Approve the site plan.
Approve the site plan?
Yeah.
I will move that we approve the site plan for McDougals Cape Cod Marine Services, Inc., to install four three-tier racks for increased year-round boat capacity at a property located 145 Falmouth Heights Road, Falmouth.
Second.
Any further discussion on the matter?
Is there a public comment to it?
It's not. It's a site plan review. Is it anything new that hasn't been brought up in the last meeting or in the memos we have? You have something new that wasn't brought up the last time?
Yes.
Please come up.
You might want to mention it's not about the use of the priority.
All right, said that. Made it clear.
My name is Paula Lickter, and I live in a four-unit condominium building at 4 Deacon's Avenue, just across the street from McDougals on the south side. So whereas last time there was talk about the condominiums to the north and nothing across, there's... I live right here, so it's directly within 100 feet. I'm not sure how to... I did write a letter for the record, but I was a little bit confused after I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, and I was a little bit confused when some of the issues came up. And I did talk to Mr. Delato about how long the beep would take, and I questioned whether a test taken today, when there are no people walking around, and there are no other boats going in and out, and there are no dogs, et cetera, would really take one minute. So I'm actually worried about... The number that Mr. Delato gave me was about five minutes per boat, which would mean if there were 60 new boats, 15 going in and out, that would be two and a half hours of beeping. And I did talk to OSHA. May I approach?
What do you... Is it something you've already given us?
No, it isn't. This is something new.
Okay, you should have submitted it.
This only happened today.
We had...
Because I was waiting... In the letter that I submitted, I said that I would be receiving a return call from OSHA today, and that any new information that I had, I would give at this meeting tonight. So...
Please bring it up.
I'd like to be able to.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't here last time.
Thank you.
Can you just pass this down? Mr. Amet mentioned at the last meeting that there are no residences on Grand Avenue across the street from McDougals.
I have to ask you, the stuff on the back page, is this for our attention?
I'm so sorry. I thought that I copied everything on the paper. I am so sorry.
So we're... So we're only looking at this document right here?
Only looking at this. I really apologize. I recycle too.
So I have to ask you, what's new about this?
Well, what's new about this is that what OSHA says is that OSHA requires that if there is an obstructed view to the rear, a vehicle cannot be used unless the vehicle has a reverse signal alarm audible above the surrounding noise level, or if an observer signals that it's safe to back up. And these photos show that the current forklift owned by and parked on McDougals Yard has no obstructed rear view. So now that's what I was confused about. Is this vehicle actually required to have a backup beeper?
We're not going to get into an OSHA requirement at a site plan meeting. I understand your concern, but this is something that you can deal with, with your neighbor and OSHA. It has nothing to do with the site plan.
Okay. Would this be something... Okay.
And I don't mean it, but it's not...
No, no, no.
You want to talk about the location of the racks?
Okay.
The fire department's already said it's clear in and out. This is... I don't...
Yeah. I apologize. You know, it's hard for a... For a citizen to know when the right time to bring things up.
Well, that's why I let you bring it up, and we now have an answer. I think you need to talk with your neighbor about it.
Okay. Would this be something that I would bring to the zoning board on Thursday?
It's up to you. You know, this is a site plan review.
Okay.
And we're talking about the plan and not the use on the site. And I think this is something, if you want to talk about an OSHA thing with your neighbor, you can talk with them directly.
I get it. Yeah.
It's not something that we're dealing with tonight.
I think I was responding to issues that came up during the meeting last time, so I apologize.
Right, but some of those also could have been use-related and should be at another meeting as well. We sometimes just let everybody talk.
And then you get me reacting to what was happening.
That's the danger about having everyone talk. We end up getting off subject quickly.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is this before the zoning board this Thursday?
I don't know. Is it?
It is. Okay.
Yep. So the zoning is an appropriate place. Okay. I guess we have a motion in the second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
So I believe next on the agenda is the discussion of the transportation element, goals, and policies. So I've asked Bob, would you...
Okay. I'll start with... This is a draft, of course, and you guys have looked at it, I assume. Have you gone over it? I just want to remind us of our guiding principles of the subcommittee. Our guiding principles: vision, sustainability, flexibility, resilience, and communication, and that we're also looking out anywhere from next year or this year to 100 years out. So the goal is far-reaching. Transportation community goal and public policy is enhance local and regional access to all transportation modes, corridors, systems, and networks. Policy number one: Falmouth will maximize regional and local connectivity and convenience. Policy two: Falmouth will increase network efficiency, flexibility, and resilience. Policy three: Falmouth will encourage alternative modes, alternate modes of travel, and promising emerging technologies. Action items, these are the good things. This is...
Excuse me. Can we talk about the policies before we get to the action items?
Okay. I was going to just read the whole thing.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
While I'm on a roll, Paul. The action items are those things that could actually become warrant items for the town meeting and could be acted on immediately, as some of them we have stated here. Strengthen partnerships with regional and state transportation agencies to increase communication, share information, and coordinate scheduling and programming. Short term, begin immediately. Responsible parties: DPW, Planning Department, Town Manager. Design and implement the improvements recommended in the Main Street Route 28 transportation master plan prepared by McMahon Associates. Expected completion November 2015. Short term, begin within the next six months. Responsible parties: DPW, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Town Meeting. Begin to implement improvements recommended in the bike plan prepared by the Cape Cod Commission. Short term, begin within the next year. Responsible parties: Board of Selectmen, DPW, Bike Ways Committee. Comprehensive evaluate Falmouth's existing public transportation infrastructure, including age, quality, and maintenance needs. Identify future needs and gaps in service to develop a long-term plan for maintenance and strategic expansion. Pay particular attention to intermodal connections, accessibility, and safety improvements. Short term, begin within the next year. Responsible parties: DPW, Board of Selectmen. Recommend zoning changes to allow alternative refueling stations. Midterm, complete within the next five years. Responsible parties: Planning Board, Town Meeting. Explore partnerships with local institutions to share resources such as parking lots and shuttles. Midterm, complete within the next five years. Responsible parties: Board of Selectmen. Consider creation of a transportation board to coordinate and manage the operation of Falmouth's network. Midterm, complete within the next five years. Responsible parties: Board of Selectmen and the DPW. So now.
Okay. Paul, you had a question on the policies or a discussion on the policies, not a question?
I think the paper's very well done, and a lot of effort was put into it. That's pretty obvious. But... And I understand policies are somewhat generic. But when you look at this thing, "Falmouth will maximize regional and local connectivity and convenience," it doesn't really indicate any specific policy there, I don't think. I'm not sure what that... What the implication is there. The second one will increase network efficiency. I think if you just add the word "transportation network" or something, that would make a lot more sense on that second one. And the third one, obviously, is very good, too. But it needs to be tied in a little bit more, I think, to the transportation aspect rather than generically...
I have no problem with restating. It is the transportation element, but if you think it's unclear and want it restated, we can probably... We can bring that up. What was the other one prior to that you had? It wasn't clear on your...
Policy one.
Policy one.
Policy one, it's... I'm not sure what that means. And maybe it'll work its way out, but that's rather generic, and it doesn't tie into any kind of transportation aspect, I don't think, the way I read it.
Well, can I...
Go ahead.
Well, action item number one kind of speaks to that, because we're looking at partnering with regional and state transportation agencies. So if something comes down the pike that we can jump into or help spur along, that's what that policy is. Policies are going to be more open and more vague, and the action items will address these different policies.
Our attempt was to draft goals and policies that have a 50-year vision or longer that are broad enough to cover the general direction we think the town should go in, and then support that with action items that are basically things that happen on a regular basis that are brought up at town meeting and voted for as warrant articles and... Or other actions by the responsible parties. So the meat that you're looking for, Paul, will be in the action items.
I understand that. There's no argument there. It's just when I read the first policy, I'm not sure what it refers to frankly.
Can you come up with another way of wording it? Because we're always wordsmithing and trying to come up with...
I know you struggle with this. I'm not trying to second-guess you, but...
No, we actually... After...
Because we do struggle with it.
I know you do.
And we want it to be so that people understand it. And if you don't really understand it, then that's something we need to change. So you don't have to... I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but you can always... As you think about it on the ride home, you can shoot us an email with the changes. That's how it happens to me a lot of times.
Because here's... Paul, here's how... If... I know you probably already know this, but just let me restate it for everybody. We work as a group crafting this language, and then we don't do it in a vacuum. We then bring it to this board for your opinion of it. And then if you like it, then we take it to the selectmen. And you've seen that they weigh in on it and change it. And if it isn't clear to you, and it isn't clear to them, we need to fix it. So we'll take that to heart. I would like you to...
Let me think about the first one. The second one, I was just thinking of adding the word "transportation network," because that's what we're talking about, basically. And it's... If you take that out, it doesn't... This whole thing is tied into transportation.
Absolutely. This is the transportation element.
And the preamble was that you guys have worked really hard on this, and I applaud you for that. So I'm not trying to be overly critical. It's just that I don't...
We're not looking for applause, so...
Sure you are. Sure you are.
No. Well, we can certainly add the word "transportation." We can discuss it with Pat.
Yeah. Okay.
Leads our little group, and then we'll bring it back to the selectmen. Who leads our little group, and then we'll bring it back to the selectmen and see if they, they like it. Any, any changes on the first one, or suggestions?
Let me think about that.
Okay, we'll wait for your comments.
I don't have anything better right now, but I think it's, it's not very specific. And it's a policy, so it's not terribly specific, but does it make sense? And I don't know.
Well, after working on it for hours, it kind of makes sense to us, but I guess that's why we bring it to you, to make sure we're, we're not believing our own whatever.
Are you moving to action items now?
Yes.
Sure.
A couple of general comments to action items. I don't see any reference to the Cape Cod Rapid Transit, who is a key element on transporting things along here. And I think they should probably be included. Tom Caher's group has done a lot of work in trying to look into modal areas and trying to do a lot of different things, and I don't see reference to that particular group, and I think they should probably be included on some of the action items. Another one is, you know, one of the things that serves Falmouth arguably good or ill, depending on your point of view, is the private bus transportation system that comes down here. And there's no reference to that. And I don't know what the mechanism is for the contracts that them, them to provide something, but if, there are private people that may provide service down here in addition to the one contract now with Peter Pan, and maybe that should be a consideration as well. Other, other entities are interested in improving the intermodal type approach that we have. They may have some better ideas and maybe a better service.
Yeah.
So were you suggesting an action, an action item would be that we look for other, other, not vendors, but other transportation providers, other than what we have now to expand that?
Sure. Regional, like the, what's it, 1, 2, 3, 4, comprehen, existing system? Well, we need to look at who's providing services now. What private vendor is providing services? And the Cape Cod Regional Trans Authority is providing services this area. We don't see that reference. I think we need to tie them in a little bit. I think it's going to happen anyway. It's just not mentioned here.
I guess we took into consideration that the, that the, that kind of transportation is not something a town can even do, and we understood that it's totally reliant on a regional transportation system, that we're not even thinking about having a town run a bus service to the bridge or any, anyplace else, that that is, that is something we need to, it has to be done on a regional basis.
There is discussion on having another train stop somewhere this side of the bridge in Bourne.
Yeah.
And then the intent would be there'd be some kind of bus service provided by them to come to Falmouth in Woods Hole. Now, they would do that, but I think that's one of the things you're trying to do here, that, you know, it's probably going to work its way out when we start developing this or implementing this. But there are a lot of things like that going on, and I think we should be at least aware of that, to make sure that when we identify responsible parties, we include those responsible parties in the discussion. That's all I'm saying.
Are there any bus companies that transport people from, say, Providence, or Potford, or, or is it all just seem to be from Boston?
No, Peter Pan runs, runs a lot from New York.
Oh, okay, so...
I rode the bus a lot. There's New York, Providence, Cape Cod, and there's also a Boston...
Yeah, but it's very inconvenient to get to Providence Airport from Falmouth. You've got to switch three times.
Yeah.
Or twice, I guess. So it's very difficult to do that, and that might be something they want to improve, too. But there are private sector groups that should be at least encouraged to do that or talk to to make sure it's a comprehensive transportation network. I see what we, what we're trying to do is use all these different avenues of, of trying to improve transportation. I think that's great, but there are those other people that should be at least referenced in here as maybe a player.
Yeah.
Depending on how they want to do it. Peter Pan could change his mind and say he doesn't want to come here anymore. You know, I doubt it, but, you know, Pumfam and Brockton probably just had a chance. I'm not suggesting we put a competition there, but they do have a contract with the state to provide services down here, and I've used the services many, many times going up to Logan. So I just think they should be included in the discussion.
On the, on additional action items, what you're talking about?
Well, including the action item four.
Yes.
Is that actually something, go to, what is it, action item, is it six? Six. Could you maybe incorporate something like that? And, because it says explore partnerships with local institutions to share resources. Could you maybe add other, you know, I mean, could it be incorporated? That seems like something, what you're talking about, but it's different entities.
Well, we're talking long-term.
Right, but I'm just saying, that one, you know, it says explore partnerships, so maybe that could include the, the other...
And keep in mind, the only things, the, it's only the goals and policies that actually are brought to town meeting, and that's what we vote and approve. And the action items are something we address every year. Those are things, you can, you can bring up an action item at any time, but we hear you, Paul. You're saying we should do it now, so...we can take that back?
Yeah.
And work on that?
Yeah.
The other thing I was going to mention is, on the third item, we have the bike plan. It says, within the next year, I, all the others are defined amounts. I'd say within the next 12 months. Within the next year.
What's the difference, Paul?
All the others say within six months. Well, one says within six months. Within the next year, is it 2016?
When did the yes, no?
That's the next year.
Oh, yeah, you're saying...
We're talking about, say, within the next 12 months.
Well, this, here's the thing, it's, you know, it doesn't go to town, after it goes to town meeting, that's when the clock starts, right? So, okay, we hear you.
By the way, there's a meeting tomorrow night for the Bike Ways Committee, if anyone's interested. They have invited me to participate as a member of the planning board, and I intend to go, but I'm not sure what they're going to do. I looked at their agenda, but they're very active in trying to do different things, and I think we need to encourage them as well. But I tie it down, it says, say, next year, whatever that means. I'd say within the next 12 months.
And where we do have a gap here is we, we no longer have a transportation committee, and we've kind of set the responsibility of this belongs on the transportation committee, so that's a bit of a problem for the selectmen.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah? That's not ours to do.
What time and where is that meeting?
Excuse me, Doug? Go ahead. Hold on, guys.
So now that we don't have a transportation board or any group representing communication with the RTA, what is our communication mechanism? And how do we implement?
Well, we actually talked about inviting Tom Caher to come talk to our, our planning group and get input from him.
The subgroup or the whole group?
Just the subgroup. He wouldn't come at night. But you're, they're open meetings, and you're welcome to come. Actually, maybe you can't do that. You only have to have three of us.
You can only have three people.
No, you can come, you can come, you just can't act as the planning board.
Okay. So maybe that's what we do if we, if, I've been actually charged to ask him to come. I haven't done it. If this is something we just discussed at our last meeting, and when I ask him, and I'll schedule a date, and if you want to be invited, we'll make sure we do.
Or maybe he can come to a regular planning board meeting and have a discussion. Then other people can participate, too. I mean, the three are doing a very good job on the committee, but it might be worth hearing, the rest of us hearing what's going on from Tom, because he's very effective in, in what he's trying to do, and he's, I think, has some great ideas.
Okay, Kent, you'll come to our meeting?
As long as you don't violate the open meeting law.
No, I think, I mean, we can, just as long as we don't talk as a planning board or vote on anything that's...
Or we can post you as a planning board meeting on Wednesday afternoon.
Or we can just post it that way and solve the problem. The staff will make sure we don't violate the open meeting law.
Well, he lives in Bourne, so it's, may not be as you well know.
Oh, we, I've had him come to the EDIC. He's very, he's very cooperative, likes to work with us. I mean, no problem, I'm sure, if he can do it, he will come.
So in item four, I think the Regional Trans Authority should be included as, as contact. Very important in that area.
Okay. Okay. You know, we discussed it, and I think we just didn't put it in, because the action items keep getting revised. We're, our main focus is on the goals and policies, but you're absolutely correct. That is, that was part of our intent, and we'll make sure it's in there. Just Doug.
So having him come for a meeting is nice, but we need to try to set up some sort of a permanent line of communication where, when they have an initiative, like for instance, the bus shelter program, we try to have that spread across the Cape. And it's not just Falmouth. All the towns didn't really have a mechanism for interacting with the transit authority, so it falls to the contractor to try to promote these initiatives. It's not very successful.
It really shouldn't be.
Right. It should be part of the interaction between them and a town.
I guess what I hear, I mean, we all, we probably need to, to address this with the selectmen and advise them, we really need to get a, a transportation committee going again.
Or at least something for the interim.
But it does fall 100% under the selectmen's purview. I mean, when I was on it before, before it went, it's 100% there. Responsibility to make sure they have the communication.
Well, I'd hate to invite someone like Tom Caher to come to a subgroup meeting. And we're not sure where that's going, or what the selectmen's thinking of, or whether there's going to be a transportation committee. I mean, once that one is set up, I think it's appropriate for him to meet with that particular committee. And he may want to meet anyway, but I think it'd be far more effective if there was some entity designated by the Board of Selectmen to deal with transportation, whoever that is, and then deal with Tom at that time.
What we were thinking of at our subcommittee meeting by having him, is we were going to ask him, what are his goals and plans? And we were going to listen to what he had to say, and if there was a way that we could tie into them, then, then we would. But we were going to be more listening to, at that meeting, the things that he wanted.
Yeah, we were going to give him a copy of this and then invite him to our meeting and listen to him.
And have him talk about the plans that he's involved in. I mean, we...
Because he might know of a mechanism, or another town that might have some sort of pipeline, so...
We've discussed all the things that you brought up, Paul, at our meeting, and it's always come back that all those things are provided, whether regional transportation authority, it's not something the town is doing, or even capable of doing. The expense and whatnot is huge. So with the, the edits you talked about, can we move these?
They'll, you don't have to move them yet.
Okay.
Especially if you want to work on policy one some more.
Yeah, we do.
You're working towards the November town meeting, so...
We have plenty of time.
You'll have plenty of time to bring them back.
So we'll, we'll bring them back again. Okay, so we'll make some revisions, Paul, we'll bring them back for you. How's that, comfortable with that?
No, and not being privy to your negotiations over the last several months, and I know you guys have worked hard, it's hard to know what kinds of things you discussed, and that's why I'm just bringing them up for me from an obvious standpoint.
Well, that's why we're here.
I want to do that. I've got comments on the last page, if I may.
Go ahead.
The next to last item is partnerships. Responsible party, Board of Selectmen. I think a town manager should be involved when the Board of Selectmen are involved. We say Board of Selectmen, it's really the town manager who implements a lot of things on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, so I think he should be referenced in there. And the last one, responsible party for the transportation board. Depending on how that's set up, the Falmouth Planning Board should be involved in that in some fashion or other. So I think they might be a responsible party in the last one. You know, they could say, "Planning Department, you do it." I don't know if they would. Or they might set up a separate entity, or something totally different. I don't know what the thinking is, but I think the planning board should have some say on the last item there.
Let me make a comment on that. When there was a transportation board, there was a representative from the planning board on that board that wasn't appointed by the selectmen, so, I mean, if, if there ever was a board, I'm sure there'd be a representative again.
Well, I think it's important.
Yeah.
If you don't say it, it may not happen.
Would it be appropriate to have an action item saying that we created, we pushed for the creation of a transportation or the revitalization of the transportation board?
It's down there.
That is what, that's what that means. Okay, so...
Consider the creation of as the way it's written.
Yeah, we could say Falmouth will.
Yeah. Consider, I think it should do it.
Will create.
You're being too polite, Molly.
Well, that's, that's the selectmen, it's not us. The selectmen has to create it.
Yeah. Well, currently, the selectmen don't really engage in transportation issues. It's not really happening.
And that's why the board dissolved the first time. I can clearly say that.
Well, when the RTA has initiatives like I referred to earlier, it goes to the planning staff, not to selectmen, and not really to the planning board. So it's a little...
And is that consistent with all the towns? It goes to planning as opposed to...
Well, our staff works on all, all over the town. They, you know, we, we've all been at the meetings where they talk about allocation of time, and not 100% is just our work. They do work for other committees as well. They do work directly for the town manager, and they, where they report to him. So that's, the, the majority of their time is for us, but they do a lot of other things. Yes, go ahead.
So each town has a representative to the RTA, and for many, many years, Brian was the town's representative, which is why he was the point person. So he was not acting in his capacity as town planner, he was acting in his capacity as the town's appointed representative to the RTA. He's no longer the town's representative. I think Jane Perry is now. So, and that is, that's the standard kind of structure for all 15 towns is one representative per town, appointed by the Board of Selectmen or Barnstable City Town Council, and I believe the votes are weighted by population. So, so they do have, I'm not necessarily, you know, able to answer all the questions about their structure, but, but Tom certainly would be able to, and that, so there is, there is a formal mechanism that Falmouth has for voicing what's important to you and then, and then receiving feedback. So it's not necessarily through your town planner, it's through your representative.
I see. Thank you.
So it sounds like we need some work here and some additional digging and details, and I, I guess we, we are planning to do that, and we have the time. So we'll bring this back again. And, Molly, if we can make sure that the, if we can, it sounds like some of the board members would like to actually come to the meeting if we get Mr. Caher to come, that we invite everybody?
Yep.
That they post it as a meeting?
Yep, we can post it as a...
The public can come, and we'll do it on a Wednesday afternoon instead of this, this time here.
Well, wouldn't you just do it at a regular meeting instead of having a...
Because if, our format is to do things that the local comprehensive, it's part of the local comprehensive plan, and we, the way we do everything, Paul, is we do it there, then we bring it to here, and then we take it to the selectmen. So we're trying to do it in stages.
Well, some of the board members have constraints with work and coaching and things like that, so it may be difficult to do that late afternoon.
But if we were to do it here, it would be in the form of him giving us a presentation, and that, that isn't what we want at this point.
We have more of an informal discussion, it's not televised, we, there's a, it's a great place to have a conversation, and, and this is much more formal.
Television's good.
Sometimes on television, people don't talk about the problems that are out there that are interfering with you, and yet anything's done, so that's why sometimes television's not as good.
Sometimes the discussion gets way off track, and people bring up other issues, and it goes on for, it's harder to...
This isn't the format for brainstorming.
Yeah, it is the format. You should, yeah. Paul, I think you should come to one of the meetings and see how it works, and then you'd understand what we're trying to say.
I did go once, I was chased away, because it would have been the fourth member, and that was not, that was not...
Molly doesn't seem to think that that's the case, there's a way around that.
We can plan for it.
We'll plan for it.
Fine. I think the important thing is to get input, and that's what you're doing, so, no matter how it works, it's important.
So we'll be back on this one.
You don't need a motion on this, I hope.
No, no, we're not done, that's just discussion, and it's not finished, so we will be back. Next item, general correspondence. I have one memo from Frank Duffy, it's really geared towards the chairman, but I'll just tell you, it, it says, it says that, you know, Frank has heard other boards say that the chairman doesn't vote, and he, in this memo, he says he does. He said he doesn't have to, but the chairman can, can vote, the chairman can make a motion, and the chairman can second. He can't both make the motion and second it, but he's not, he or she is not restricted by the Robert's Rules of Order or anything, and that's been said a couple of times, where he just wanted to make it clear that that's not the case. I was aware of that, but it's pretty straightforward, and I don't think we have an issue on it that other boards had. He wanted to make sure that it was brought up. This is something that's been sent to all boards and committees, and that's the only thing I saw in this file, is that, is there anything else? Where can I record here?
We don't have suggestions for, I suggest we put that in the agenda next time, suggestions for future meetings, that's not on here, but maybe next time we, we-
It should be every time.
Yeah, we should leave it as a blank agenda item.
At least once a month, anyway, but-
Brian, it'll be on the next agenda where Brian's back.
Okay. The next meeting is scheduled for April 7th, and hopefully we'll have everybody here. And with that, I'd listen to a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, closed.